Call the order to the city council meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, February 16th. It is now five o'clock. The city clerk, please call roll.
Ms. Speaker?
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reapell?
Here.
Council members Clarence Better?
Here.
Dale Helms?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark Demers?
Present.
Brian Larson?
Here. Does Terry McCormick please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes for the February 2nd regular meeting and February 2nd closed session summary and February 9th work session.
Move.
Move by Reapell.
Second.
Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Schedule of lightings, none. Schedule of public carings, none. Under consent agenda items under consent agenda will be adopted. One motion, however, council members may request individual items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Any members like four through seven polled? Not entertain a motion at four through seven, please.
Four through seven.
Move by Reapell.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 10, consider approving the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-350 pickup from Midway Ford Commercial for a total of $34,693.84 for the fire department.
Move.
Move by Reapell.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 10, consider approving the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-350 pickup from Midway Ford Commercial for a total of $34,693.84 for the fire department.
Move.
Move by Reapell.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Consider approving the emergency lighting for $6,765.28 from CORD 4 and $1,245 from striping form for striping from custom stripes for 2021 Ford F-350 pickup. Is there a motion?
Move.
Move by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Better. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-16, accepting the quote and awarding all four proposals to 2021 city project number one, 88 improvements to Tony Anderson's construction for a total of $142,692.50.
Move.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 13, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-17, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 Safe Road to School Sidewalk Project.
Move.
Second.
Move by
Better.
Better. Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-16, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 Safe Road to School Sidewalk Project.
Move.
Second.
Move by
Better.
Better. Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-16, accepting the quote and awarding all four proposals to 2021 city project number one, 88 improvements to Tony Anderson's construction for a total of $142,692.50.
Move.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-16, accepting the quote and awarding all four proposals to 2021 city project number one, 88 improvements to Tony Anderson's construction for a total of $142,692.50.
Move.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider approving the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-350 pickup.
Move.
Move by
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider approving the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-350 pickup.
Move.
Move by
Better.
Better. Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-16, accepting the quote and awarding all four proposals to 2021 city project number one, 88 improvements to Tony Anderson's construction for a total of $142,692.50.
Move.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-16, accepting the quote and awarding all four proposals to 2021 city project number one, 88 improvements to Tony Anderson's construction for a total of $142,692.50.
Move.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-17, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 Safe Road to School Sidewalk Project.
Move.
Second.
Move by
Better.
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-17, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 Safe Road to School Sidewalk Project.
Move.
Second.
Move by
Better.
Better. Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-17, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 Safe Road to School Sidewalk Project.
Move.
Second.
Move by
Better.
Better. Second by Reapell. Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-17, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 Safe Road to School Sidewalk Project.
Move.
Second.
Move by Helms. Any questions or discussion?
Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-17, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 Safe Road to School Sidewalk Project.
Move.
Move by
Better.
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Demers?
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 21-02-17, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the 2021 Safe Road to School Sidewalk Project.
Move.
Move.
Move by
Better.
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Demers?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Larson?
Nothing this week, thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Gall stood?
Nothing unless somebody has any questions for me.
Mr. Emery?
I have nothing tonight.
Anything from the department heads? Nancy?
Just wanted to remind everyone that our first open house for the land use plan is next Monday, the 22nd, and it's virtual. It's through Zoom for Microsoft Teams. I'm not sure which yet, but you have to register. Right now, it's not being televised. It will be televised afterwards, but if you do want to participate, let me know. I will send the email out again, but you do have to register for it, and then they will send you a link to the meeting, so.
What is the time of that again, Nancy?
6:00 PM on Monday.
Anything else from department heads? Chief Bushy?
Yes, Mr. President, Council. Like to thank you for approving my request. I appreciate it.
Anything else? Not entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Move by Better.
Second.
Second by Reapell. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move, same sign. Motion is carried. Means adjourned. We'll take a couple of minutes. Let Dave and Reed come down. We'll go into the strategic planning session.
I'm just going to leave the Zoom on so that people can look at that.
Yeah, a while ago, but not recently.
I put that chart together from numbers, so I just, I don't think I've ever
Looked at the numbers. It's just crazy, though. I mean, it makes you know, first we're gonna keep going up.
This is what it should be doing. You know, this is up to 1997 right here. That's what it should be doing. And it's been trending. I mean, look how tight it got, and then it just I hope the folks down there realize that it's not like we're
It's amazing how this can jump from here to there.
Yeah. That's just when they funded it to a greater extent.
I know.
Thank you.
It's crazy. Why we didn't.
Yep. That's what they told us even at the coalition meeting is, sadly, there's something happening here. We can throw more and more money total at it, but it doesn't help you guys any which way they parsed it.
Got a few more of the answers on there.
Anybody sitting at a table like that should expect to get grilled.
Yeah. The lights are shining a little brighter up here.
Interrogation.
I have no recollection of that event.
Call the order to the strategic planning session for City of East Grand Forks for February 16th, 2020. It's now 5:13. City clerk, please call roll.
Ms. Speaker?
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead?
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reapell?
Here.
Council member Clarence Better?
Here.
Dale Helms?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Mark Demers?
Present.
Brian Larson?
Here. Does Terry McCormick? Number one, discussion on strategic planning. Mr. Murphy and Reed Hutton.
Yeah, I guess I'll just, the focus of tonight's meeting, because I know we're under a limited time here. We have to get to the VFW arena, so I'll just turn over to Reed. I know we, I think it sent out the visioning recap. The deliverables from the strategic planning session that we had over at the senior center was building, first was to focus on the building committee, get some suggested committee members, and suggested committee members for the fundraising task force, and Reed has also put together a timeline for the building committee meetings, and so I will turn that over to Reed, let you know what he's found out, and he's, I know, made some contacts and has had some people that are interested, so.
Okay. Take it away. All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So, the packet that I put in front of each of you, I'll start by saying that none of this has to be totally set in stone or final. All of it is still up for discussion, changes as we go through the process. Any input, I'm open to any and all input on whether that be committee members, the demographics of the committee as they're made up, the timeline that is in the packet, but I've got, I think, a pretty good start here to a potential building committee. The first page, I won't go through these, I won't read them all off, but the first page I just laid out a little, at least a start to some goals and objectives of what a building committee would focus on, reviewing the current recreation facilities that we've talked a lot about that are in need of improvement, how those facilities are currently used, how as a community we'd like to see them used in the future, if those can be included in any changes or improvements made. We certainly want to make sure that their facilities, that can be used as well as possible on a year-round basis, and making sure that that's kind of the goal of any project that we execute here. And then, of course, working through the programming needs, the project scope, the budget of any of those improvements. And then, of course, this committee, a building committee, would really be able to deliberate any of these considerations and the conversation as we go through the process, involve the community in getting input wherever possible, and then report any of those findings back to the city council for your final approval. And then, ultimately, of course, just to make sure that we're executing the work that all of you instruct us to do, so that the project is on time and on budget, any project that that would be. So, the second page, I've left a list of a potential building committee for you. The names and the status on the far right, you'll see pending. If it's pending, I've left messages and had brief conversations with people, but haven't got a firm confirmation that they're willing to serve in that role. The first two that are pending are, one is a potential Parks and Recreation Commissioner that Mayor Gander has spoke with. He hasn't been appointed, officially appointed, in a council meeting, but I think that he would be a very good person, both in our Parks and Rec Commission and on this committee, to serve a strong demographic in the sports-related world, and someone that has been in a lot of arenas all over the world and all over the country with an officiating job. So, I think he could give good insight. The other one is the second Park and Rec Commissioner. We have a Park and Rec meeting tomorrow at 4:30, and I want to make sure at that meeting that these two, if they're going to be the ones, that they're ready for the extra time commitment that it takes and that the rest of the commission is good with my recommendation to have them be a part of it. So, I think that those two would be good to serve the Park and Rec Commission. The rest of the members, you'll see as you go through it, I'm trying to recommend a wide demographic of people that would use the current facilities. And I really, at this point, tried to leave it to people that currently use the facilities regularly, the figure skating club, the Blue Line Club, the high schools, Sacred Heart, and Senior High, the baseball fields, hockey, figure skating being the primary sports. I certainly think there's an opportunity, as we go through this conversation of a scope of work, and again, how we can better use the facilities, I think there's an opportunity to invite different demographics and different user groups to planning meetings, but I think that this would be a nice core group, core demographics at least, to be a part of a building committee. Anyone that has name confirmed, they've confirmed with me that they're interested in serving on the committee, understanding the time commitment it would take and kind of what we'd expect them to do. So, and then I listed staff members. Those, myself, Mark Dragich, and Brian Larson would be the three staff members that I would expect from our Park and Rec Department to be very involved in the process from day one. There would certainly be times where I would ask Ms. Anderson, Nancy Ellis, with her ADA code requirements and so forth, ask them to be at meetings when it pertain to them, certainly Mr. Murphy. But we wouldn't look at any of us as staff as official committee members. We'd be staff liaisons to the committee. And then the third page I have for you is a timeline, trying to lay out tentative dates from last week. We released the fundraising study RFQ last week for proposals. We've had really good feedback on that. I think I've spoke to four or five firms that are interested in that and that plan to submit proposals. I've got a couple of more scheduled still this week to visit with, just kind of give them a brief overview of what our project looks like and what we expect the fundraising study to tell us. So, that is already moving. Meeting dates, if you guys are all are confirmed that you're on board with the direction I've laid out, we'll get started still this week on setting meeting dates for the building committee to get started as soon as possible. And then I really, just from there, tried to lay out all the way from now through the end of the year, in what this planning process looks like, important city council dates, whether they're work sessions or regular meetings, to be able to bring updates back to the council, timeline of when we would expect to get approval on things, what dates I'd see those council meetings taking place, that we would get approvals, and keep the process moving all the way through, hopefully, whatever a project looks like, a construction date starting in the spring of 2023. So, with that, I'm just, I think, open to any feedback or thoughts anybody has.
A quick question on the building committee, or the, wondering, looking at the list, and it's a good list, I'm glad you put it together like that. The only question I have is, you know, we always look for representation, wondering if we should figure out a way to have someone representing, you know, a more senior perspective, if we're trying to build facilities that are lifetime, you know, facilities that looks, like I said, these people are all active members, and not that they wouldn't take that perspective into account, but I think if you have someone specifically for the senior perspective, if we want to have that type of thing, I don't know. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, Reed, you've probably made these available on our website. Are these tentative timelines and whatnot? Are these available for people to look at?
They're not yet, but they will be.
Good.
Certainly.
I think the people will like that. You know, we're getting that engagement right now, and it's starting to get some traction there. And I guess I'll just say, thank you. I mean, you do such a nice job laying the foundation for us to look at, and if we're going to tweak it or anything, that's really good. Lot better than starting with a blank sheet and saying, what do you all think? How should we do this? So, you've really done a whole bunch of good front-end work here, and I want to thank you for that.
One of the things I'm wondering is, do we want to look at maybe scheduling out meetings with Deb Kill and Mark Johnson and have that on here, too, just to make sure they're in the loop of what we're doing and the progress we've made, and so they can echo our, you know, our efforts in fundraising when they're down there for us? And anybody they recommend that we contact? Yep, that's a good idea. I think maybe one thing that I breezed over too quickly, too, in talking about this, is one of the second elements that we discussed at our planning meeting was a fundraising task force. I realize I didn't mention that at all. So, the way Mr. Murphy and I discussed these committees forming and taking place, we thought a building committee is probably going to be a lot busier of the two committees with much more frequent meetings.
At least at the beginning.
At least at the start. And I would expect that those meetings will probably be, need to be a lot more interactive in kind of rolling up the sleeves and really going to work on the scope of whatever a project like this would look like. So, in order, for the sake of productivity, we felt like a committee of eight to 10 people would be a great place to start with that. So, to Mr. Demers' comments, I certainly, I think there could be an element of a senior representative, senior citizen representative be a part of that. I think that we could target that pretty easily and still fit within that eight to 10 people size frame. A fundraising task force, I also have, I didn't provide that to you because I haven't spoke to many of the people that I have, but I've got kind of a target list started, that right now, I think it's already got 25 people targeted. That's not to say that 25 people would all be interested in being a part of it, but that's the one I see probably being more acceptable to have it be a larger committee, a larger task
And anybody they recommend that we contact?
Yep, that's a good idea. I think maybe one thing that I breezed over too quickly too in talking about this is one of the second elements that we discussed at our planning meeting was a fundraising task force. I realize I didn't mention that at all. So the way Mr. Murphy and I discussed these committees forming and taking place, we thought a building committee is probably going to be a lot busier of the two committees with much more frequent meetings.
At least at the start.
And I would expect that those meetings will probably be, need to be a lot more interactive in kind of rolling up the sleeves and really going to work on the scope of whatever a project like this would look like. So in order, for the sake of productivity, we felt like a committee of eight to 10 people would be a great place to start with that. So to Mr. Demers' comments, I certainly, I think there could be an element of a senior citizen representative be a part of that. I think that we could target that pretty easily and still fit within that eight to 10 people size frame. A fundraising task force, I also have, I didn't provide that to you because I haven't spoke to many of the people that I have, but I've got kind of a target list started that right now, I think it's already got 25 people targeted. That's not to say that 25 people would all be interested in being a part of it. But that's the one I see probably being more acceptable to have it be a larger committee, a larger task force, because there's going to be a lot more, we need a lot more boots on the ground, so to speak, with that one, being out in the community and visiting about this with their neighbors, with their friends, with their colleagues and so forth. And really, it's going to take a very active community base to have that follow-through the way we hope for it to. And the last thing I would say to the building committee piece of it, that I think, I think is a great thing for our community in East Grand Forks, and it shouldn't go without saying, is that I really think that this building committee, there probably are very easily 20 people right now that we could say could do a very good job for this committee or that would be very interested in doing it. So to have this list of eight to 10 people in front of you, it's not meant to slight anybody else that wasn't included on it. It's not a perfect list by any means, but it's, I guess it's our best effort to get started with something. It could certainly change as this process goes through, if we feel like there's people that need to be added or removed for whatever reason. So I think with that said, I think we have a really strong and a really engaged community in this whole process, and I would expect there's going to be a lot of really strong people that come to the forefront at public meetings and through input processes that can be really valuable to making sure the project is successful, whatever it looks like at the end.
Reed, did you say at one time with this building committee, there's going to be representations maybe from the construction side of it, actually a company or?
Yeah, certainly. When we get into the public, into scheduled meetings, we would have, JLG would be a part of these, especially when we talk about programming or design, like how the buildings, whatever they function, what function they're going to have and how they're going to be used. Right from the start, JLG would be very involved in those. Whenever a construction manager would come on to the project, they would be very active in those meetings, in a lot of cases even leading the meetings when it gets down to it. JLG or the construction manager would be very involved in leading that.
You might have two to four more people on that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Reed, you're aware that there's a generation of people, say one generation older than I am, that have done some planning on arenas in the past, and they're still pretty passionate about the arenas and maybe the future direction of them. Well, they may not be, you know, wanting to serve on a committee, but if there's ever a time where you're going to want to reach out to that group and would like my help, you know, to go have coffee with them and meet with them and just pick their brain, because they're pretty wise folks too. So if you'd ever want to do that and you'd want me to join you on a, just a friendly visit, I'd sure offer that.
Thank you. Mr. Demers?
When we did our study before was the elderly or the older generation opted more to do help of fundraising efforts. They preferred to do that and let the building committee handle the nuts and bolts of what's going to be projected. They would take maybe two, three, four, five names, and that's the people they would go against. But they usually offered out these are the five I'd like to go see. And they might do a team thing where two or three go in to meet instead of just one person. And it worked out quite well. But that's where we found most of the, they preferred to do that versus be on the...
We're speaking as loud as the mic we're going on.
They preferred to be on the building thing, or not on the building committee, they preferred to be on the finance committee. So.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. Just, I look at the goals and objectives for the building committee, that the fourth one down, the guide and finalized project scope of work, the total budget considerations included, to me seems like the earliest big benchmark. Is that the, does that correspond to that July through September, design team needs, finalized project draft, project package and project budgets? Or where does that kind of fall into that?
It does. I would, I would say the June, there's two meetings, pre-design review meetings with June 9th and June 30th is what those are laid out for. I would say that, that's where we'll really sit down with the designer and have a, hopefully have an idea of a total not to exceed budget to work within. We should have our scope of work by that point really laid out and what we want to see the project look like, so that we can give the designer final direction on what we want them to design, show us. And then once that's, the pre-design work is done, then the construction manager can apply kind of a real-life budget to it. So I would say, yes, with those two dates corresponding and then a July, sometime in the July, August timeframe is when we would bring those results back to the city council for you all to review, get a first look at, at a work session.
So at that point, will we have a range of options or will we have, this is what the committee says? I guess my point, my worry is, is how far down the line does the council get input into it? Like, if they give you one thing, this is what we have, and the council's like, well, we kind of had something else envisioned, are we, all of a sudden we've wasted all that time? I don't know if that would happen, but I'm just, I'm just wondering what's the, yeah.
Yeah, it's a very valid concern. And Mr. Murphy and I have talked about it too. I think that's something that we would expect to do very quickly, is bring back some more high-level project proposals back to the council. Even, Mr. Murphy and I talked about even next month, on March 16th, we could bring back some really high-level, are we going to try to repair our current arenas for X amount of dollars? Do we still have a goal of building new for X amount of dollars and so on? And kind of bring a few different ideas in to this, to a meeting like this, to look at from a high level. And at that, hopefully at that point, we can start to weed some of those things out so that when we get into second half of March, April, May, we can, our, our building committee has a focus of what you as a city council want them to work on. Because I don't want to spend half of the year either with our building committee working on three different project scopes and then we're, we're all over the place on what we want to see executed.
Right. And then is the, will the scope, you know, it talks about, you know, identifying existing uses, will it also take into some consideration future use or future need or, I guess, want for, for better? I mean...
Are you talking?
Say you want to do, say someone wants to build something more in line with, you know, has a health center on top of the civic center or something, like, is that going to be part of it or are we only focusing on current, current programming, current, you know, levels of need? Or, you know, even with growth figured in, if we're going to add X amount of teams or whatever. But is it only going to be for current programming? Is that what we're dealing with with scope?
Well, I guess I, if I may, I guess that's one thing that the, the building committee would, would need to take into consideration. And I think part of, I do like Councilmember Better's idea about, because the building committee's meeting really every week is to submit the, the actions of each, a summary of each committee meeting to the council, so you guys aren't surprised by anything, you guys know what's going on. And I think that's something that, when going back into the review of the current facilities, current maintenance needs, code compliance, and how are the facilities are currently used, and where are they lacking? I think the where are they lacking part of it is one I think they would need to, need to be hit on, I think as far as for the future needs. And so I think that's something that they will, in my opinion, attack pretty quickly. But I think the one thing that they would need to be aware of is just to make sure that they're not competing with activities that are offered other, other places as well. You know, just they, they would need to keep an eye on what the current and future market and need would be for, for any future activities.
Are you angling for your splash park?
And I, I guess I would say to that, if I can, just to the other piece of it that I would really like the building committee to look at, that I don't think we looked real close at when we did the initial feasibility study, looking at adding the arena on, is looking at how we expect to operate and maintain long-term. That's, I think, we're getting to the point that if we're going to talk about a major project beyond repair, we need to have a really strong understanding of what that does to the city, to the parks and recreation budget as a whole, how we operate, how we maintain, what that means for employees, all of that needs to fit in, along with future programming, what kind of growth we see with those activities. So to answer your question, I think, yes, we would expect to look at all that.
Could that include, you know, private-side partnerships that aren't necessarily naming rights partnerships, but we could do that, but also private-side foundations? Is that for fundraising and stuff like that?
That would be more of the fundraising. And I know one of the, that, one of the things that Reed has brought up to me in some of his conversations with other communities, I know he had quite a lengthy conversation with Herman Town.
Yep, he did.
And they've, they've gotten over the, the whole championship stuff, so they were, they were willing to talk. So, but the one thing that he did say that, that's come up on a lot of the places that he's spoken to is that, is to really get a good estimate of what your maintenance and operating costs are going to be, because that's sounded like one of the areas that, that they kind of regret or wish, if they could do, go back on and look a little bit better, is the actual maintenance costs, what it costs to operate and what it costs to staff and what it, because sometimes the, what it sounds like the projections weren't always 100% realistic.
I think one of the things you have to look at too is, if you're looking at what we have to offer now and into the future, is actually look more regionally too, of what is being offered in other cities, you know, and we always have to look over across the river, what they've talked about today or yesterday in the paper about what they want to do with the land south of Larry Center, indoor turf or whatever they'd want to do out there. So I mean, just look at, if we did something, would it be viable, ongoing? And would we be able to make enough money to keep it running? So I think, I mean, I think that's one of the things we have to keep in the back of our mind. You know, if we do this, is it going to be offered somewhere else too? And, you know, is that going to be?
That's what I mentioned before, about to make sure that we're not competing or trying to offer something that might already be saturated in the, in the area.
Mr. Elms? Yes, Reed, I like, I like the way you have it laid out here, where you got the, where you're coming back to the council and everything on your committees and everything and doing all that. I too have a little concern on the building committee. You've got some very intelligent and very good people on there, but I also look at that committee and I'm thinking to myself, it looks kind of stacked, for a better way to put it. I'd like to see you get maybe, I know you don't need, you don't want a whole lot of people on the committee, but I'd like to see you get a couple more business people maybe, and maybe just some citizens of the ones that are going to end up paying for this. I'd like to see them involved in that a little bit more. I just, I look at this and I look at the people you have, and like I said, the people you contacted is, is great, and they're fine, but I'd like to see you have just a little bit more broader citizen on that committee if possible. Otherwise, yeah, it'd be, and again, like I said, I like the way you brought it, you got it coming back for all the, all the little steps and everything you're doing here, so.
Yeah, and that was, if I may, that was kind of a judgment call on there, because we have the three community members. And I know Reed and I talked about that as, as far as, you know, who do you put on for the community members? Because the rest of me, we've got the Parks and Rec, we need, you know, probably the Senior High Activities Director, the Sacred Heart Activities Director, we need the Blue Line Club, Figure Skating Club uses it a lot, trying to get somebody from the Home Run Club or the baseball group, you know, that represents that. But the community members as well, you know, to get more, yeah, to get, rather than somebody that maybe has quite, maybe not, not such a big dog in the fight, you know, to get in there, that's more of like a average persons, you know, that maybe kind of is more marginally involved in it, but doesn't have a kid in it or isn't actively involved in it. And that's one thing I did think about and bring up with, with Reed is, yeah, do you go with that or do you go with the business? And this is just my, my aspect of it. For the design part of it, I thought maybe to keep it a little bit more where, where we did, and I was okay with it in, just in my personal opinion, because the fact that the fundraising committee gets involved in it pretty quickly as well. So there'll be, there'll be a lot of discussion back and forth. So really, when, in my personal opinion, wouldn't be too late to really, to modify it if need be, or if it gets, or if the building committee looks too, gets to be too aggressive where it's, you know, the, the fundraising committee is saying, you know, we'd never be able to pay for that. So I'm, I'm hoping that they'll work in conjunction, and I was satisfied that they, they start working together pretty quickly in the process. But no, I, I get your, I get your point, and it's kind of a, kind of a judgment call, where you go in there. But if you have any names?
Yeah, we're open.
Certainly, we're certainly open to names.
Yeah, you've got a whole bunch of good people there. I'm not arguing that a bit. They, they know their stuff.
Like somebody from the business community or something like that, if, yeah, we certainly be open to a name, certainly.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. This kind of builds on what, what Mark mentioned earlier, where we want to avoid a situation where we're a few months into this and the city council's priorities don't line up with the building committee's priorities, and then we've, we've wasted some time that we don't have to lose here. I would urge you to find a way to get the council's priorities down in some sort of ranked order. And, and I know that's easier said than done, but some way to get something on a document that's shared with the building committee, so that they're not feeling like they're starting from scratch. And I'll leave it up to you guys to figure out how to gather that data, how to rank it with everyone here in the room. But I think that that is a worthwhile exercise. And then one other comment related to the maintenance and operations, you know, there's a lot of studies out there where the cost to build the building is, is just a fraction of the overall total cost of ownership, right? And one of the mistakes that government entities make quite often is that we don't have a capital renewal expense built in to the funding for, for this building. And so I'd really urge you to include that in the overall, call it the pro forma, as we look at the financial plan for how this building is funded. Because 40 years down the road, when, when this new building wears out, we want to have the money in the bank to build a new one or take care of it along the way, right? So we don't have to go through this all over again. So I really urge you to make sure that that's stressed early and all the way through the process.
Anybody else have any questions or?
I guess one more thing, and I appreciate the point that you've made and has been made otherwise, about not going on two divergent paths, the building committee and the council. And we've learned that sometimes our committees take a deep dive into the facts and they take a deep dive into, say, public input and even into the reality, you know, what are the constraints? And sometimes we, the council, are involved in governing the whole city. And so that's where those, I think those weekly reports will help a lot. If we sense though that we're at odds kind of early on in the process, we could bring in a couple of representatives of that committee to try to reconcile it, you know, and maybe there is a meat in the middle, kind of a compromise thing that we could do step by step. I love your point of why go two, three months on a divergent path when we could go a couple weeks and maybe reconcile and then go step by step like that. And really putting a lot of faith in that committee, because I know, like I say, they'll, they'll do the deep dive into some of the details and then just along the way, share them back with us.
And the same thing, should work with the finance committee, that you keep them abreast of, of what you're doing, because they're the ones that have to sell the project.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, well, I'll just kind of add on to that. That's, one of the concerns I've had with this project is I've followed it before I've joined the council here, is that the scope is so broad and there's so many opportunities for input, which, which is wonderful, but everyone has different priorities. And it seems like we've, we've added a number of sub-projects on to what was essentially like a rink project, maybe is how it started, or at least that's how I viewed it before I joined the council and learned more. It's, it's tough to attack such an amorphous-shaped project that we don't know where it's going to go, and we don't have a gate or a fence that really hems this in yet. Is it a total budget? Is it a total cost that we, we don't want to pass? I just, I, I feel like we need to create a shape of this project and we need some, some gates, and I'm not sure what they are yet, and I think that priority list will help. But until we really set some of those hard boundaries on a job, be it, be it budget, be it some of these priorities, I think that we're going to feel like we're, we're kind of treading water a little bit, and that's, that's not a great position to be in.
If I may, I'm, I'm fairly optimistic with this, how this is set up and the process we're going through on this, because I, I think it's going to become apparent pretty quickly with the, with the building committee, because I know the, like Reed laid out there, really the first thing that they're, they're looking at is the maintenance needs, you know, code compliance, that's one thing, but the, the main was how the facilities are currently used, what they do well and where they're lacking. And I think the part, the part where they're lacking, you know, because I think we have a, a pretty good cost estimate of, if we're going to remodel and, just for what we, what's currently used. But where we're lacking, that's where I want to, I'm really interested in, in seeing where some of the committee members come in with what can be added to our, where we can maybe improve on. Once we get that, I think we can develop that, the parameters on how to flush that out. I think until then, putting in some parameters might be just a tad premature. I'd like to see really where, where they come with that. And I don't know, I'm, I'm really, you know, I'm excited about this, how it's set up here, because the other thing with getting the involvement that we, we do in keeping the council prized and with the fundraising committee, that hopefully that the, the majority can really coalesce around this project and, and whether some of the, the feedback and pushback that we're going to get, because it's, it's one of the weird things with, with government is, the city administrators I talked to and on all the projects that I've been on, I have never seen a, a building or a project or, or any sort of government built in the, in the right spot. It's always in the right, it's always in the wrong spot. It's always too much, it's not, it's not what it really needs to, you know, there's, there's always the pushback, you know, because it's, so, but what, it seems like the, the difference between the successful ones and the ones that get pushed to the wayside and succumb to that pushback is whether the, the core group and there's a group within the, the city of, of non-council members that really truly believe in the project and are willing to push back on some of that feedback, you know, that negative feedback. So I think we're really set up to, to do this well. I've been very proud of Reed. He's done a fantastic job of, of putting this together. So I think it's, we're about as primed for success as I think we can be realistically.
All right. Anybody else have anything for, for tonight? I see none. Wonderful. Get you out here for your meeting.
Perfect.
Entertained a motion to adjourn. Who by re-appel?
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.
Even have, even have drive time.